Um, Taiwan.
Good afternoon, members. I now call to order the special meeting of the F C. There will be three sessions until seven P M. Today, the purpose of the special meeting of the F C is to scrutinize the twenty nineteen twenty twenty estimates of expenditures just to make sure that all the funding requests would not exceed what would be required for the implementation of policies. You can only ask questions related to the estimates of expenditures, and you have to refer to the reply serial number, say, for example, I T B zero zero one. You may also want to ask supplementary questions in writing or follow the issues at panel meetings. For those members who like to speak, you may now press the request to speak button. Um, for this session, we have Mister Nicholas Young, the Secretary for Innovation Technology and Mister Ching Wing Hing, Permanent Secretary for Innovation Technology, as well as their team members. I'll give the floor to Miss Yang, the Secretary. Please confine your opening remarks to five minutes. Thank you, Chair. Since the setting up of the Innovation Technology Bureau I T B, the government has put in a huge amount of resources for perfecting the innovation and technology ecosystem in Hong Kong. The current term government has been promoting I N T development along the eight major areas assessed by the Chief Executive. The initiatives, there was funds include developing I N T infrastructure, promoting R and D, pulling I N T talent, supporting technology enterprises and promoting reindustrialization. They have injected a strong impetus into I N T ecosystem in Hong Kong. I'd like to thank the Finance Committee of the Let's Go for the support rendered to our work, in particular approving all our funding and establishment proposals in the past year, enabling us to move ahead with our agenda with adequate manpower and resources. In particular, amendment of the Inner Revenue Ordinance, so the proposal to provide a two-tier additional tax deduction for eligible R and D expenditures of enterprises can be implemented. The F S announced in twenty nineteen twenty budget an investment of additional six billion dollars for I N T development and enhancement of existing initiatives. For new initiatives, the budget set aside a total of six billion dollars to enhance the long-term development of information technology industry. Five point five billion dollars for Cyberport five, six, providing sixty-six thousand square meters of floor space to accommodate more quality technology companies and startups to set up their offices in the Cyberport and create room for development of other new technology areas like insurance technology, financial regulatory technology and legal technology. And for nurturing talent, we have five hundred million dollars for I T Innovation Lab in Secondary Schools Initiative. This is an enhancement of the existing enriched I T program. The number of secondary schools benefiting will increase from eight partner schools providing enriched I T class in more than hundred forty involving in involved in enriched I T activities to approximately five hundred publicly funded secondary schools in Hong Kong. We'll provide up to a million dollars for each of the secondary schools in the coming three academic years so as to enable them to upgrade their facilities and organize extracurricular activities related to I T. This facilitates secondary school students to learn about the latest I T and enhances young people's interest in I T and innovative thinking, thereby promoting an I N T learning atmosphere and encourage them to pursue tertiary education in relevant technology areas and a career in I N T in future. Respect of the existing initiatives, since the announcement of the budget, we have increased the monthly allowance on the research program and extended the maximum engagement period for the research program and the postdoctoral hub from two years to three years. We've regularized the technology voucher program. And they it has been enhanced, like doubling the funding ceiling to four hundred thousand dollars, expanding the application eligibility, et cetera. In the coming years, the external environment will continue to be volatile. My colleagues and I will continue to work hard to promote the development of I N T and enhance the overall competitiveness of Hong Kong. Our key tasks are, first, to participate in full in the development of the of an international I N T hub in the Greater Bay Area, creating a broader arena for the I N T sector. Second, press ahead with the establishment of two research clusters to facilitate the setting up of laboratories by research institutions, thereby promoting R and D collaboration between top local and overseas researchers. Third, to continue taking forward various I N T infrastructure projects like the Hong Kong Shenzhen Innovation Technology Park in the Loop, the InnoCell, the Data Technology Hub and the Advanced Manufacturing Center. Fourth, to launch the reindustrialization funding scheme and support the Science and Technology Park to build dedicated manufacturing facilities in I E S to expedite the realization of reindustrialization. Fifth, promoting smart city development, launching the E I D and Smart Lampos. Sixth, to organize the first city I N T grand challenge to drive the atmosphere in Hong Kong. And seventh, to organize a number of larger-scale I N T events like the I N Ts Summit and the Inno Carnival to promote I N T culture. Hope members and public will continue to support our work. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Yang, the Secretary. The floor is now open to questions. Four minutes each. First, Mister Gary Fan. Thank you. I would like to follow up on reply I T B one through four in relation to the admission of talents. I want to know more about the details. First of all, in fact, in my question, I would like to know more about the period of engagement. But then in the reply, we were merely given some information saying that it would not be fewer than twelve months. I want to know about the maximum period, five years, ten years or what? And then for the forty non-locals, I would like to know about the shortest as well as the longest period of employment. I think it should be enclosed. Has any has any one of them been allowed to stay in Hong Kong for more than seven years? And as a result, they become eligible to apply for permanent residency? And then among the forty who have been admitted, I think more than half of them, that is twenty-two of them, have come from mainland China in relation to the highest qualification of the location of the degree awarding institution. I refer to the problem of talents who are not really talents. And in fact, the Immigration Department has carried out investigation into such cases of fake talents. So have you ever carried out any investigation to establish the authenticity of the academic qualifications? And if you have carried out your vacation, how come that the Immigration Department still has to look into the suspected cases? Secretary, it depends on the needs of the enterprises. An enterprise may have to liaise with the relevant tenants. It's not a wishful thinking on either party. Say, for example, having the tenant for seven years. Well, it's not a matter of wishful thinking. Um, well, it's a matter of a contract between the two parties. I can provide more information to you after the meeting. As to the other figures, I would like to defer to our Commissioner. If you want to have an idea about the figures, I can defer to the Commissioner. Yes, Miss Choi, please. In relation to the number of years that they have applied for in order to allow them to work in Hong Kong, I can provide the information afterwards. My understanding is that in most cases, they stay here to work for two years, but allow me to provide the information afterwards. As we have said, the employment period no less is no less than twelve months. As to whether some of them have been staying here for seven years, well, in fact, it was only launched last year. So we only start to get the applications, and it was only in the past few months that we have been approving the applications. As to Mister Fan's question, there is whether they'll be staying here for more than seven years. As this is a new scheme, so we are talking about fresh applications to be admitted to Hong Kong to work. As to the verification of the academic qualifications, yes, indeed, we did check. We did try to check the universities involved and whether they have got the right qualification, the right discipline for the employer enterprise. Now, we are talking about innovation technology talents. So usually, the enterprises would ask for tests and examinations to be carried out. So it is only when we are sure of it, then we will approve the application. And in fact, they have to meet the requirements under the scheme so as to get the quota. Mister Fan? What about the authenticity of the academic qualifications? What about their certificates or diplomas? Well, I have to check the details. I think both the Immigration Department and our own staff would have taken a look. Well, as to whether we need to have a look of the original copy to establish the authenticity, allow me to go back to check and give you the information afterwards. Next, Claudia Bo. Zero four two, and this about the setting up of a of an animal laboratory. A year ago, I asked a question, and I was only given a very vague answer. The position is the same here. It is said that part of the government's allocation of ten billion dollars will be used to establish the animal laboratory. I think you would like to operate the Animal Research and Drug Testing Facility. What is meant by part of the government's allocation of ten billion dollars? Can you elaborate? You talk about drug testing. So you would like to carry out the tests on animals like cats and dogs? Or rather, could you sort of identify the species involved? Cats, dogs, monkeys, fish? I think you have not been specific. You just tries to dismiss my questions in a few words. So you give me the impression that it is a very mysterious setup. You talk about market research and feasibility and technical studies. Is it something ongoing? I'd like to defer to the Commissioner. She did answer your question in the past. Miss Choi. Well, for the Animal Research and Drug Testing Facility, well, whenever we carry out any R and D in the medical field, we need such a facility. Well, among the ten billion dollars involved, we have stipulated that three billion dollars should be used by the S T P C to develop facilities for common use of the two platforms, covering the Animal Research and Drug Testing Facility as well as robotic facilities. Well, as to what animals, which animals will be involved? Well, I think many speaking will be testing on the rats, yes, the mice. Dinosaur pigs or rats? Which one? It depends. It depends on the R and D institutions and which species they need to use. So it all depends on the subject matter of the R and D. We are still vetting the applications or the proposals. Therefore, at this moment, we don't know which will be admitted. But what I can say with certainty is that it is only when they have confirmed that they are coming, then we know about the nature of the R and D, and then we know which animals will be involved. But I would say that mice would be the most common animal to be used. And as I have said, if you would like to develop medicine for eyes, then usually we have to use rabbits. And then for any surgical-related R and D pigs would be used. So I would say that these are the commonly seen animals used in the laboratories.
Let me follow up question. Let's say we're using pigs for a surgery, surgical surgical procedure testing. So where do the pigs come from, as you understand? So, um, well, I think they should be locally sourced instead of flying in. I think they will be the most effective one while suiting their needs. Next, Mister Charles Mark. I have a lot of questions. I think I T B had replied most of them. Just want to follow on some information. I T B oh four four. Uh, what's about the tech connect block vote? About those under ten million dollar items can be expedited. And we can see for the list from twenty eighteen to nineteen, twenty nineteen to twenty, they have the list of supported technology projects. So most of them are, it doesn't come with which problems. What is, want to get more information and to see if you can supplement them by writing. Since the department is out there, for example, the Police Department and at the, at what they are saying, sweet video investigation and enhancement system. And this year, they have won a sign of nine point one million about a social media and deception analytical tool and a predictive email scam and analysis system. So I wonder, can you supply their background and the objectives? And for the pick-up prison, uh, uh, in misbehavior and analytics, even though it has been raised at the relevant panel? And for the O G C I O blockchain pilot scheme, so what does that entail? So let me unquote one more area. I can see I T B oh four five. I T B one two eight, for those two questions are related to Cyberport and some universities' sponsored projects. It have actually listed out the sponsors, the subsidized companies and their projects. Therefore, I T B one two seven, when asked about the corporate venture fund and the invested nine companies and had not expect and provided information since they are providing subsidies, and yet the science park have not provide the list of subsidized company on the amount of investment where a cyber port can do it. Can you, the science park corporation provide the list? So can the O G C I O answer on the blockchain project? I had a permanent secretary, Mister Chuck.
Well, I'm for the what, let's say for the H K P F project, for what does it entail? Uh, speaking of, you wanted to go for one by one. I don't have enough time. For the, um, a video explorer order to enhance their criminal investigation skills as well to deal with missing persons and and when this contagion, they also to track the source. And for the automation cybercrime capturing, categorization and correlation will make use of big data and efficient intelligence to conduct feasibility study and a pilot scheme is to enhance the cybercrime detection facilities. And for the video lower to enhance and the poor quality video to so as to be a submissive evidence. And for two others, of this social media deception analytical toolbox for using to detect suspicious as social media footprint and bogus account so as not to use social media for deception means. And for the predictive email scam analytic system, it make use of big data and cloud computing to enhance the the investigation of bogus domains and uh, uh, phishing scams so as to protect public safety. For Mister, what, we like to look, listen to the blockchain, Mister Lam Y Q. And for the pilot application blockchain technology, we'll work with at least three departments to take on projects currently in discussion. We have already for, for example, the Company Registry, the Interchange Property Department, the Department of Health and the Environmental Protection Department. For example, in some companies, we need to change the name of the directors. And the Office Registry will need to exchange information with the banks, and the blockchain technology will help the banks can quickly be told of the change of directors. And the I P D will talk about the transfer of I P. Department of Health is about the drug control and the E P D is to do for the submission of environmental impact assessment. And in the Q four of twenty nineteen, this will, projects will be launched. Can you give the mic back to Mister Mark? So give me a block vote, and they will not get further funding, apply for funding individually? And finally, can you provide supplement information on the science park issue?
Mister Ray Chan. My reply number is one six eight and one seven one. And which the one six eight is about the government a development of mobile apps are involved for fast few years together wasting money developing these mobile apps with very poor take-up rate. I see they have been proven recently. Well, maybe the Fed is over, so it's not that departments are not compelled to create ones. For example, last year, there's only four apps being launched. And this year, other than the launch beginning of this year, there's only one in this year. I think we've been very careful instead of just spending the money. I still found, let's see, quite an example, the Invest Hong Kong. They spent three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars to develop an app called Invest Hong Kong News and Events. It's only have eight hundred fifty downloads. For cases like this, and should, um, providing news, just do you need, just develop Instagram or wave chat, Weibo account can handle this. I hope that the government can make pretty use of public resources. Next, the one seven one. On the E I D project, my question is about the expenditure estimates. And the government provide a reply of two point five nine billion. Does it fall under O G C I O recurrent Expenditure? I read from the news that the government had announced that the Ping Ant Technology under Ping An Group of China and have signed a contract on February twenty eighth with the government to become the architect and maintenance provider of the E I D to help the government to set up the E I D system. For the company to be awarded this contract, is it because it is the lowest in price or due to its technology superiority? Speaking of technology, I'm worried about facial recognition most because this are most concerned by the public. So I would like to ask the, first, on the facial recognition function, why is this necessity? Well, the fingerprint would achieve the same thing. Does facial recognition make things quicker? For the old identity cards and the passport, do they have the facial recognition feature? I don't think they have the identity cards. For the passport, do they have the facial recognition function? And how would the recognition apply other than passing the immigration? Let's say for some large-scale public events, let's say we go to Civic Square, there's a mass assembly that after this, well, first, is this feasible or whether you apply? Let's say a thousand people in a crowd, and you could actually, by pressing a button, you can identify the identities of the those attended, or do you plan to do so? Next, Secretary Yang.
Uh, let me answer first the question. The facial recognition is nothing new. The key is accuracy. Because people will change sometime, your face color will change. But Ping An technology has been, technology has been proven. We're just doing the V I Ds not to identify people in a large-scale public events. The A I D would pride accuracy, so the technology is definitely superior. So our new procuring mechanism since the first of April is that we apply. So it didn't been put price first. I'm sure in the technology is over sixty percent. And for other part, I let the Mister Lam, Government C I O.
And for the two hundred being awarded, the Ping An have been given the highest technical score and the lowest price. These two combined to produce a total, so they will score the highest in the two aspects. And for, why do we need to use our facial recognition? That we use in two aspect first, but in the registration process, we will need to verify the information, the identity card and match against the Immigration Department database. So therefore, we will apply the technology. So what's difference with fingerprinting? So the fingerprinting lab by Immigration Department can only use for immigration checkpoints. So we can't use the fingerprinting for verification. And only the photo can be used where we use the facial recognition to match against the Immigration Department records. If the two have matched, then they will allow them pass through. Well, uh, they either use facial recognition or through fingerprinting or a cornea recognition or a sound fingerprint. And the secretary has said facial recognition is not to identify who is in an event. It's just when the registration and using the E I D, when this function is activated. So for the estimate of the twenty point fifty-nine billion, would that fall under the recurring expenditure? Yes. Next, Mister Attorney Chair, four minutes. I would like to follow up on two questions by Ray Chan. The reply number are I T B oh oh four and oh oh five. On opening up the real-time transport data and this smart lamppost scheme. Looking at the replies, I see there's a common thread, which I could sum up in one word, slow. For the green mini buses, there are arrival information function. And they claim they will trial in middle of next year, and they will implement faces in the year after next and will fully implement it at two years afterwards. And now just only talk about the G, mini buses, the other kind of buses and so on. And for the real-time information L C S D venue will take three years. And the attendance at polls, there's actually no plan to provide such information. And on this smart lamppost, it's also slow. We remember where the, uh, Calum East, and the Jason Calum East was proposed that when the Carol Lamb was this Development Secretary, and now that he should become the Chief Executive and halfway through her term as C E. As at the end, claimed at the end of this year, they expect to install eighty-five smart lampposts. As a recall, at another session, I've asked this question to R J S D, um, love upgrading their computers from Windows seven to ten, it would actually take them two years. While some, there were nothing to do with them, what the I T B is only three years old. But we know, well, for new technology, will probably a lot of things would have happened in two years' time. I hope the secretary do need to come up with some ways to make the civil service to broaden their horizons. Otherwise, how would the smart government come about? That's my first comment. And second.
That's my first comment and second.
Of course, um. Sometimes we may need to have consultants to help us if we want to innovate. And it will take two to three years' time easily, but do we have to resort to consultants all the time? I'm sure there are talents within the social surface, so it's a matter of mentality and culture. So Secretary, would you agree with me? Secretary, thank you for your questions. We understand your uh observations. Well, let me say this, once every three months, our bureau. Will meet with the other nine policy bureaus um in the context of the steering committee chaired by the C G. As to whether we could have moved more uh faster, well, we are um doing our best. Now, we have got eight major directions promulgated by the C G. Yes, so regularly we examine our policies. Uh within that framework. As to whether we could have moved faster, uh yes, we do want to do so. There's always room for improvement. Uh perhaps the P S can also supplement. Yes, Mister Chek. As the secretary has said. We certainly agree that we have to be as fast as possible when we want to turn Hong Kong into a smart city. Mister Che said that the lamppost scheme was promoted by the C G when she was still the development secretary. Well. Um for the smart city blueprint, it was promulgated towards end of twenty seventeen. It was at that time that there was a decision to introduce the smart lampposts. Well, Mister Tony Che asked, we are talking about few hundred of them and still it would be. Uh requiring two to three years' time. But then we are talking about uh road excavation in busy streets. So we don't want to um obstruct the traffic and therefore we need time to sort of do the cable laying. As to the green mini buses, as to whether the real time information could have been expedited, we will reflect your concern to the policy bureau. Yes, please switch on Mister Chair's microphone. Well, you may very well be able to come up with a hundred excuses. I think it's a matter of overcoming the difficulties instead of just telling us what difficulties you have encountered. So efficiency is important. I'm I know that more haste let uh. He being too hasty would also ruin the project, but still you have to be quick. Well, sometimes we need infrastructural uh support. I also agree with you that efficiency should be given priority. Our mindset, our culture would also be crucial. And recently, you must have seen that the steering committee has gained a breakthrough. That is, we've changed our procurement policy and we have liberalized a lot of uh setups. We are grateful to your comments. Please continue to give us such advice. Mister Wu Chi Wei. Well, of course, we are all very supportive of innovation technology. It's a matter of talents if we want to uh succeed. I would like to go to. Reply number zero six seven. In the third um. Part of the reply, it is said that the I T B does not have development statistics. But uh we know that local students as well as mainland uh students. After uh taking a master's degree in Hong Kong, they will go overseas or go to the mainland. Say for example, uh Wang Tao, um who is the C E O of the D J I of the. Uh drones, I think he's a outstanding example of such a phenomenon. Now, if I may go to the fourth point of my question. It is said that seventy percent of the researchers uh have indicated that they would plan to pursue a career in the I N T. Related industries, but then this is about the researcher program and this is their aspiration rather than. Uh what they have actually have done. So Secretary, I'm going to carry out a sort of tracking sort of survey. So that we can find out uh what they opt to do after being trained by us. Say for example, their career path and whether they would uh continue with the R and D. And we want to know about the reasons as to why they have made a particular choice. And then we can come up with a policy to retain our talents. Otherwise, we are just um um. Being ineffective in our work because we may very well be nurturing the researchers. And yet maybe after the program, they will just leave Hong Kong to look for other opportunities. And the second question is as follows, just now we have said that we spent a lot of money to nurture the. Innovation technology researchers, but if we take D J I as an example, indeed we've nurtured Mister Wang Tao. He's most successful, however, um he is uh developing his business on the mainland. So take his case as an example. Well, of course, uh this is about the industry of drones. He was nurtured in Hong Kong. What about? The economic gain that arises from this business and then he has gone to the mainland? And what about the G D P or value created by his business on the mainland? Now, it seems that we are merely talking about training and yet we don't follow up on the talents who have been trained or nurtured in Hong Kong. It would be an economic loss, so we need to strike a balance. There is, we need to emphasize the um. Commercialization of the research results as well, Secretary. Well, R and D belongs to the realm of. Macro perspectives. Yes, I know Mister Wang Tao and I know his story. But we need to take a broader perspective. Now, if you want to know whether we can keep the talents in Hong Kong. Well, in fact, for the past few years, our I N T sector has doubled and we have a number. We have increased the number of talents by a few times and we have gone over ninety-one hundred uh startups. And more investment in I N T. In the past, we had one point two billion dollars for the venture capital. Now, it is almost eighteen billion dollars. Four years ago, we didn't have any unicorns. Now we have got six, one of them being a local enterprise. So if you want to look at the competitiveness of Hong Kong. Well, we have an edge in turning out a lot of talents because we've got outstanding universities. However. Talents would um. Choose a market which can offer him or her the best and numerous opportunities. So what we want to do is to provide a favorable I N T e- ecosystem. So as to make ourselves attractive to such talents, so that they don't just have a job, but they have good jobs so that they want to stay here. Uh well, Professor Li Zhen um was the professor to um nurturing Mister Wang Tao. And um there are also other talents who could decide to stay here. I don't think we need to go after the um sort of uh finer details. Uh as to how much we've gained out of it. I think it's better for us to have a broader idea. We have got a number of uh talent schemes and it's uh based on a few points. First of all. Hong Kong is a small market uh and Hong Kong. Needs a lot of medical research and we need more research into A I. Because we have got an aging population and the labor force is shrinking. So it is an area that there is a lot of potential and we have an edge. As to whether we have to track the career development of the master degree holders, I think there's. Something for the future. Mister N Zheng, four minutes.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'd like to comment on zero nine eight, zero nine nine and one eight three. We are going to have two billion dollars um on the. Innovation Technology Venture Fund and there are uh co-partners. Uh who have um been select, uh which have been selected. Now, I just want to say that now that we are having cooperation with them. Well, of course, we are putting up the capital. What about their input? Are they also putting up some cash? Or are we um sort of um benefiting from their know-how or their talents? I think that's what we are interested in. And then for. Zero nine nine and one eight two three, they are similar. Well, we put up two billion dollars. So as to launch the reindustrialization funding scheme. But then for this reindustrialization process, do we actually have a clear direction? So what sort of industries are we talking about? Uh electronics, computers or. Medicine. So I want to know whether you have a rough idea as to what you are interested in. Hong Kong's market is small and we lack land. We are not able to develop our industries in all disciplines. And then five hundred million dollars will be spent on secondary schools. And there's the I T Innovation Lab in Secondary Schools Program. So you're repeating the same arrangement. You give them one billion dollars each so that they will procure the necessary information, technology, equipment and professional services. Or they can organize more relevant extracurricular activities so to deepen students' knowledge of cutting-edge I T. But are you providing any steer as to the direction? Now, you know that for secondary school teachers, they aren't I T experts. They may not be too up to date about the latest developments. So it seems that you're leaving it in the hands of the schools. And I'm afraid that some schools may just spend the money on sort of exhibitions concerning I N T. And they think that they have met the requirements. Don't you think that it's better for you to provide some steer for them? Thank you, Doctor N Zheng. As to the two billion dollars. On the I N T fund, well, um it is a matter of a matching fund, one to two. So cash, yes, cash. And then for this I T V F. Um I think it's a matter of venture in uh capital investment. They are the venture capital investors. They know um best, so it is a matter of smart money. And we are sure of it. If we don't have the venture capital, the value cannot be enhanced as rapidly as we wish it to be. So we have to depend on the V C's before we can get the unicorns. And then as to the other uh point. Data is money. That's our future. And then we have the Advanced Manufacturing Center and it is soon to be completed. In a moment, I'm going to ask the commissioner to supplement. As to the I T Innovation Lab in Secondary Schools Program. I think you have a point. That is, if we follow the same funding method, it is not going to work. However, allow me to continue. It is a question of. Uh upgrading the enriched I T programs. We have got eight secondary schools, which are partner schools. And then for the extracurricular activities, they will be, they have been open to other uh schools. Hundred and forty schools took the initiative to join and we found that the results were excellent. And members have always wondered why we have confined to program to eight partner schools. So eight partner schools and participation of hundred and forty. And so we've decided to cover five hundred in total. So this time it is different. We don't just leave the money in the hands of the school. We have a task force will follow up on the needs of individual schools and will help them to spend the money wisely. And the question is, we want to make sure that through the extracurricular activities. Students will know the cutting-edge I T and will be providing assistance. Otherwise, what they learn in the classroom would not be the most up-to-date knowledge. We are trying to enhance the awareness, the interest, so that in future they will be interested in in a career in the I N T. Miss Choi.
Commissioner Choi, would you like to supplement? And for two billion reindustrialization subsidy. Our goal, well, uh Miss Che had a point, this is not uh on traditional industries. Thus, they would be a less space and less labor intensive, but more knowledge and technology-based. Modern manufacturing. These uh production lines will be involve Internet of Things and sensors. To assist. But I'm would say that even if they switch up the lights, they will continue to manufacture. Since uh they only involve a one or two persons. With the technology competence to able to control the operations of the plant. So that's what we call a modern manufacturing, which is not a conventional ones that require a lot of land and manpower. Clear enough? Next Mister Albin Yeo, four minutes. Since we replied to the secretary to the professor Lee Che, so maybe uh secretary forgot that um the. Miss Professor Lee have taken the apps from H U S T and start their own business. I hope there are other uh good professors to nurture future talents. Uh so seventy-three, seventy-five reply. I would like to ask about the efficiency of this. So this is from back in nineteen ninety-two, even though last year it will be put under I T B last year. And the way the reply. To those questions, question for seventy-three, seventy-five. I'm provide the I T B with a table. Yes, seventy-five is the only three lines reply. While you know how to fill out the table on reply seventy-three, for seventy-five. I'm asking. That instead of a streamlining the administration government services and can improvise any information committee. This unit doesn't come from nowhere, it'll be working for such a long time. Let's say if you start in twenty eighteen, you still have this year, but does that mean that nothing happened over the past year? Secretary Yang.
I'll be meeting Professor Lee from time to time. Well, he had trained at least a dozen entrepreneurs, so that's why he's also a shareholder. I believe he is one of the very rare um professor billionaires. That's why I don't blame him taking lead from H A U S T. There are lots of professors like him in H K U S T. For other questions, can you have uh uh. Miss Olivia Nip, Commissioner for Efficiency. And when you see in one to reply something rather exhaustive, another one uh seems in rather uh. General terms. And when we're performing streamlined administration or in. The workflow we have doing a lot, for example, on this smart management scheme, we've answered that. In our response. We've been uh outlining a government-wide programs to see how the departments can. Uh streamline the external vetting process. Or to um simplify their application procedures where they can have more technology elements. Since we formulated the details, thus we're not able to uh list out the details in the reply. I'm wondering if I've been to demanding for, I've been asking the commissioner or his team. I'm not asking for a thesis, I just wanted to see a table to see what had been done for the past year. And the commissioner had answered a bit of it, but just three lines can really dismiss let's let's go. Especially come, you claiming that. It's like considering a comprehensive program, what do you mean by that? Our mentality is that I want to use little information to dismiss let's go queries. And in the Controlling Officers' Report, we have mentioned that in a coming year, there will be. A comprehensive program to um streamlining of government service administration. I thought that the governments members we we uh question.
I thought that the governments, members, we uh questioned in that regard, I'll be asking what we done for the past year. We can uh supplement the detailed information afterwards. I'll follow up at a later occasion. Next, Mister Liu Yucheng, four minutes. Just now the secretary's reply to Charlie Wang on the uh Secretary School uh I T Innovation Lab Initiative, which the while within I T, it seems to have a much injection to I T Innovation Lab, let's say one million per school. From past experience, we know that money needs to go first. But uh the um but this money is uh is the only uh critical factor with this extracurricular activity. So uh it very much hinges on student engagement. I can't say they're not interested, but necessarily too enthusiastic. They're either, they'll be uh wanted to a short time and call up afterwards. While the uh teachers would definitely push students towards extracurriculars, so the results may not be good and yet continue since um they have to use up their funding. Is it definitely like optimistic and rosy as the secretary promised, which he said it will expand to all the schools? I have quite skeptical. If the student does not have any future chance of applying what they know, it will stay as a hobby, not sustainable and not practical. Which is not ideal. How do you mean by practical and sustainable? I've been teaching um industrial schools, school for a long time. Back in the eighty nineties or even in the millennium days, when they entered the classroom, I'm teaching the uh matriculation. I'm asking what do you want to study? Some of them want to study electronics or uh electrical engineering. Most of them did, because back then they were enjoy good employment prospect and in keen demand. But later on, when the industry migrates northward, most of them does a drop, lost interest in that subject. Well, well, it's that the I T as is rosy as a promise, there's some uh scept about it. So how determined are you determined to uh push through this and how can you? Well, this is more than curriculum design. Well, um in So instead of a hobby, so you can make them take up voluntarily as the future career pathways. For the E Q Fund, a lot of how the school spend the money to buy computers and actually wasted the computers, yet they use up their funding. What the quality education fund, what to purchase high-tech equipment and to set up their computer rooms is good in theory, but it's all came to waste, it's idle gathering dust. How to ensure they make this student can voluntarily uh to uh join these activities for their future career planning? Besides the money, how do you attract them interests? I see this is an um expansion of the enriched I T program. The current I T program only involve eight schools to a hundred eighty-something schools only or voluntary nature. Do not given that more subsidies, this is was a pilot scheme. We were surprised that they've they were very good response for the enthus- for the uh voluntary schools. While been monitoring for three years, I would see that is def- is uh interest is sustained. I just wanted to tell Mister Liu some uh statistics, of the a hundred voluntary schools, about eighty percent are in Ben Chu and three secondary schools. This is quite inspiring. This uh students are are clearly interested uh in uh may big data and A I. This is more soft and hardware. In this case, where the exposure to this may bring hope to them. There's no homework. There's nothing compulsory, but it's all voluntary. Well, after three years, we see a statistic that um inspire confidence to expand to all schools. If the resource can actually get to Ben Chu and Ben Three Secondary Schools, the results may even exceed our expectations. We must be fair. That's why we decide to um and expand to all schools. Mister Liu, okay, let the secretary finish about the prospect. Well, hobbies are hobby. Well, if that prospects, it's not this pointless. Any supplement? Permit secretary. Mister Liu had a point. Uh for this extracurricular activities for our learning, we need to be voluntary and truly interested. However, we can't overlook that is the chicken or egg question when you have to perfect the tools. That's why we're providing one million subsidy to school, not all them will be for activities. Uh some there will be for procuring equipment. For example, to learn about blockchain and big data. As for whether it, this is just wishful thinking for one million subsidy. I see this that the O G C I O, when conceiving this initiative, they have consulted at a lot of schools and which we get a very positive response. And Mister Liu mentioned, while in the past, back in industrial age, a lot of students will study engineering or design subject likewise. There's no question that this is the technology or digital economy era, thus we have to nurture our students to embrace this challenge. And speaking of prospects, in developing Hong Kong into an international I N T hub, we have invested a lot of resources. And the uh two, post just two years ago with announced that we have uh uh invest ten billion into international I N T hub. And after the launch of this measure, within a short time, well, let's say a few months, we have received forty-seven applications, which included a a lot of uh it renowned universities globally. The response is so good that we didn't have to uh stop accepting applications because we can't process them in time. I think the student noticed that we have international go- go- universities coming to Hong Kong. Also, we could attract the major tech enterprises to Hong Kong. You can see that this industry carry a lot of promise.
I hope uh not just Mister Liu gets the reply, but students uh have also heard the uh reply. Doctor Elizabeth Quat. Well, I think as far as the development of the I N T ecosystem in Hong Kong, I think it's been prospering and it's also matured. Talents, capital, projects, all of them have grown in number. And I think it is a very favorable uh scenario. Uh I think we need to commend the I T B for their hard work. We are so grateful to the um various government departments for their cooperation. But I'm sure there's still room for improvement. Say, for example, talents. June last year, you have the immigration scheme for the um technology talents. I think you told us that for the first year, the target is one thousand. And then for the science park, it was the cyber port, they would like to get more uh people to come under the technology talent admission scheme. But according to your replies, uh we have a quota of two hundred fifty, twenty-five, but there are only forty applicants coming from uh for thirty-eight enterprises. So you haven't achieved your target. I already told you that um enterprises other than the cyber port, as was the science park, would require uh technology talents. So don't you think that it is high time for you to open the scheme to other enterprises than just the cyber port, as was the science park? And have you found out why um so few um applications have been received? And when we compete for talents, we compete with the Greater Bay Area, as was the Southeast Asian countries. I don't think uh we have been proactive enough. We have been told that the high rentals, small living space, inadequate international school places for children are putting them off. Um they may think that going to the mainland to live or going to Singapore to live and work uh would be more attractive than coming to Hong Kong. And sometimes they get a lot of concessions or they get subsidies. So I think we need to be more proactive. And then for smart city development and smart living, yes, you have done a lot. But I just wonder if you will agree with me that there should be more uh liberalization. Well, a lot of enterprises would like to have trial projects. However, they found that they need to approach different government departments and they need to take out different permits and licenses before they can uh launch a project. Yes, of course, the science park is trying to implement projects under the concept of smart city. But can you not provide a sandbox so that you have a basket of projects at the science park? And this way, um the proponents don't have to uh go to government departments and numerous of them to take out permits and licenses, because the I N T enterprises are not good at that. So can you provide one-stop service? And then next to the science park, um you have already set aside a site for the development of luxurious residential apartments. So there isn't much space left for further development. Of course, you will say that we can go to the loop um to have further development, but then we have to wait for a long time. Is it possible for us to get more G F A so as to provide more space? And then for the science park as well as the residential development next to it, with a population of a of tens of thousand of people working there. So it seems that there is a traffic bottleneck and it is not quite accessible. I've been talking to the local people. We are trying to see if there are suggestions uh that can be implemented to provide greater accessibility. Sorry, speaker is off mic. Three questions. Secretary. Yes, I'll provide short answers. If Doctor Quat would like to get more details, please talk to the I T B, because there isn't time here to talk too much about the details. For tech tax, technology talent admission scheme, indeed, um one thousand places uh were first uh proposed. Now, we've got a quota of two hundred twenty-five. This is because of changes in the circumstances. A thousand uh quota uh was decided after consultation with the industries. It wasn't a figure product from the thin air. But then, of course, uh there is a global um competition for talents. And so there may be a time lag. And after the application, we need to carry out the verification work. The immigration department has been working very swiftly and it has taken them four weeks only, and then we have already approved forty cases. As to whether the scheme can be opened to other enterprises, we are considering the feasibility. We have committed uh ourselves to carry out the review in a year's time so as to improve the scheme. For the for the cyber port, yes, we have got a cluster of over three hundred thirty enterprises. About half of the fintech companies uh resident at the cyber port. So and in fact, about thirty percent of them are from overseas, not local. So um it is a truly international landscape. And then uh directly and sandboxes. The science park has already got a sandbox for auto or driverless um uh um auto cars. Well, for the loop, river loop, yes, again, that's an opportunity. We talk about uh liberalization. I think it all boils down to talents and that will um be the same as having the um opportunities for us. I would say that um we have got a lot of opportunities in the Greater Bay Area. And um there will be many opportunities available. We don't need to be too worried. As to the industrial estate policy, it has been amended. And we have already improved the availability of sufficient G F A. For the science park, yes, indeed, um transportation is a problem. Mister Yu Siwing, four minutes. Zero zero five, that's about the smart um lampposts. Well, we have been told that um before the middle of this year, there would be the first phase to be implemented in East Calun. Um covering fifty-two lampposts. I just wondered if you can add one more location. That is, Toka One, Yuyet Street in its vicinity. As you know from the papers, that we have got a large number of mainland visitors in tours, tour groups. They um we have retail and dining facilities to um meet their needs. Well, I think we need to step up the management. We need to provide more parking spaces for the coaches. If you don't collect the traffic data there, then it means that it will be difficult for the traffic police to know that they have to go there to enforce the law. So since you are having the lamppost scheme, the smart lamppost scheme, I just wondered if you give, you can give priority to installation of a number of lampposts, smart lampposts in Toka One. And then you can learn from the experience, while at the same time you can help the local people um to uh benefit from smoother traffic. And then another question is about zero two six, and that's about um the Wi-Fi hotspots. Understand that currently there are over twenty thousand of them. And um since there are twenty thousand, uh I think um perhaps you can try to take stock of the situation so as to have an evener uh distribution. Like at the boundary crossings, are we getting full coverage? And what about the utilization rates? And what about the speed of the transmission? Can you not en- enhance them? If not, perhaps you should try to extend the coverage to the tourism attractions as was the boundary crossings. And then for the ocean park, it was the Disneyland. Uh yes, they aren't government facilities, but then they are popular with tourists. I think they should be covered as well. In this way, we can live up to the image of being an international uh tourist city and we can enhance the tourist's experience. Secretary. Yes, I think your idea is excellent. We can consider Toka One. But then we need to be careful here. There is, we have to ascertain whether the infrastructure there can support the um um program. And since road excavation will be needed and we don't want to cause traffic jams. Yes, please uh talk to the local district council members. Yes, noted. In fact, we have been considering different locations. However, we need to work with the other uh bureaus. We have got a total of fifty-seven thousand Wi-Fi hotspots. For twenty-three of them, we have Wi-Fi dot H K as well, and it is the same brand. We need to be sure of the security. So we have more than thirty-four thousand. We want to enhance the brand name and every year we are trying to rationalize the program. Sometimes we may have redevelopment or the telephone booths have been demolished. Or the um number of uh users in the vicinity is low. Otherwise, will be uh taken to task by the director of audit. We have got a third party, that is the Polytechnic University, to carry out a survey regularly. So if you're interested, we can share the information with you. Well, the findings of the survey are such that it is most encouraging. There is the speed is usually above twenty Mac. Um I think the universities are credible and I think you can take their word. So please have more confidence in a Wi-Fi network. As to smart tourism, we have already got five spots with high-speed Wi-Fi facilities. And it is already available at the Hong Kong International Airport. It is very successful. And soon we are going to see if we can have more sports being given a higher speed. In this way, it can enhance the tourist experience while in Hong Kong. Yes, Mister Liu. Follow up all the tourist attractions in Hong Kong. Will they all be covered? Well, personally speaking, uh that's what I want, that's that's my position. I think we have to make sure that there will uh there are sufficient, uh there there are enough users to justify the provision of Wi-Fi uh service. Mister Roy Kwong. Well, I want to follow this up. Zero three zero, Facebook of the I T B as well as two zero six. First of all, for the Facebook of the I T B, so far there are only five thousand lights. Uh do you think that you need to do something to boost the rate? Mister Kwong, you asked the question two years ago and I gave an answer. Well, um we promote I N T and this is not just um facing the public. We also want to boost the I N T awareness within the government. We haven't got any dedicated staff members to boost the rate, but you were right. Two years ago, two thousand lights and now five thousand, there is a uh an improvement or a progress. But as to the optimal number, I think there's no end to it. If you pursue uh this matter, we will continue to um drive up the number of lights. Uh you have a good memory. I asked this question two years ago. Of course, I have to follow this up. Of course, uh you need to have an I N T favorable culture within the surface as well. You can't give us a uh price tag to it, but at least uh you have to give us the uh perception that um you have a sort of a high sort of a level of expertise in I N T. You can't just be uh reposting uh the information from other departments. Uh you have to set an example and you have to take the lead. I hope that there will be a change in two years' time. A follow-up question here. Are you happy with such a rate? I'm not going to answer this question. This is because I've got many other figures that I would like to share with you as I've done with other members. Uh coast working space, have we got more of them? And what about venture capital? Are we having more of them? And what about R and Ds shared in the G D P? That's our priority uh areas of concern. Would like to go after such broader concepts and broader issues just to benefit the population and the enterprises. I also work harder concerning our Facebook. But to be honest with you, everybody within the bureau is working very hard. Uh we'll of course try to do better in terms of our Facebook, but I'm not going to give you a figure as to the optimal number.
Chief Secretary have their own Facebook page at Secretary for Innovation Technology. You must look into it, even though the secretary refused to answer my question. But I hope that this uh Mister Yang can keep trying. Yes, I will. The reason I don't answer that you're uh you're asking, what do you mean by a perfect F B uh audience? Of course, you ask another secretary, we uh and that um and I T B claimed this is a target, so um are you happy or not? Well, um what I mean by satisfy, I mean that benefited the whole Hong Kong population. I'm not asking to be perfect. I just want to have a normal uh external communication. In terms of Wi-Fi, back in twenty sixteen, the policy agenda mentioned by the end of this year, it will get to thirty-four thousand Wi-Fi dot H K hotspot. However, the connection is often uh choppy. Now that is April. You still have like half a year left. Can you get to hit the target by the end of this year and also the quality of the connections? Well, at this, I would defer to the ch- uh government chief information officer to answer that. Well, by the, before the end of last year, the all the Wi-Fi hotspot in government venues have been using the Wi-Fi technical standard. Eight oh two dot one one A C after this. Uh then um the in interference had greatly im- reduced. While sometime it would due to um very slow speed, therefore we have boosted the speed, connection speed, which reduced the likelihood for an interruption. Well, is sometime is we would too far from the hotspot. Someday we ha- now we have clear labels to ensure the uh public is right close to the hotspot so as to um bring up the speed. But our recent measurements would expect to provide a ten megabits per second. So um they were able to um handle YouTube and normal serving with ease recently. I untested Wi-Fi connection and the near the Tamar area. Usually they are over thirty megabits per second for both upload and download. And for uh Mister uh Kwong asked about the number. First, uh we look at the Wi-Fi hotspot install our own facilities now in all public housing estates. Some uh small parks and open area. And hospital not yet to be covered by Wi-Fi. This year will install hotspot in this area. Though we talk about three thousand new hotspots. Another hand, w- will work with the Hong Kong Tourism Commission and the Tourism Board. Um having have a queue mark system for sh- shops. Let's see if this Wi-Fi connection can reach a certain speed or have as security. A certification will re- recognize it as a Wi-Fi dot H K hotspot. I believe that there will bring in six thousands hotspots. We'll continue to with our private point, public partnership, which some that the uh 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 allow private companies to install hotspot in our government venues. There will add another two thousand. So altogether, they expect to add eleven thousand new hotspots. So we'll a- proactively follow through so that we can meet the target of thirty-four thousand by the end of this year. Next, Mister Holden Chow. My question is on I T B one three six. That's the question raised by Mister Jimmy Ng. And on the reindustrialization funding scheme, and in reply, it was mentioned that the uh our our F S two billion, they will only launched a bit the second half this year and will uh consult the panel of coming industry in May twenty nineteen. I just want to get some uh initial views from you. As for in just reindustrialization, let's say a lot of my industries have migrated northwards. Uh we asked the entire production line to be located in Hong Kong. I s- well, um the good industry claim is quite difficult. Very often, let's say the Dongguan currently the um different own components on the production chain will uh actually have full ecosystem and provide all to the parts. While the Hong Kong doesn't have such ecosystem, was since we have uh abandoned this direction anyway. For our reindustrialization, would you be focused on a certain part of a production chain or under special circumstances because it we'd, this is back-to-back production chain would be difficult to to implement in Hong Kong. So and any thoughts from the secretary? Thank you, Mister Chow's question. For the whole production chain, you don't have to have the whole production chain in the same location. For example, the an Apple will have the highest well added in their headquarters. The other part of the production chain that could outsource to elsewhere like China. The commissioner has been um negotiating with the industrialists. Well, for reindustrialization, besides space, you also need hardware. Recently, uh we have do a lot on industry four point O in training talent. Then uh the the resource on for training for industry point four will have been allocated to industry. So as for well, um why do we um at consult electrical by May, we're still hashing out the final details. I believe that I also agree with you. We don't meant to have the entire production chain in Hong Kong. What we look aim for an industry to use a little land, but uh highly value added. Commissioner Choi. Our uh aim is not to target specific industries, but rather require you uh less manpower and land use with high technical know-how. So uh not convention, all convention industry will be suitable. And now um those in touch with the science park cooperation or individual investors or industrialists are in interested to invest in new smart production lines to fulfill our criteria. And some some uh will uh have uh apply through a chamber of association, some that involve a large floor space. Like you say, is there any time industries? A lot of the production chain, the chance to pull the cloud industry together. Well, we have such kind of industry negotiating with us. We then still pledge uh which industry are welcome. Well, each industry is unique itself. Which of them can have um modernized manufacturing proceeds processes that are suitable for reindustrialization will will welcome. Next, Mister Shu Ketchin, four minutes. I'd like to follow up on reply I T B O O two. That question was raised by Mister Wei Chen. I would like to follow up on esports. Maybe secretary uh thought that what how is it related to social services? Well, I've discussed it with the so- uh the cyber youth service. Their biggest challenge was the the space constraint. Now the hockey club have a regularized their program. And yet they're not able to uh scout for good locations and currently uh they're housed under the uh uh youth service centers. And yet those youth in esports, ninety percent of those usually don't patronize this uh youth service centers. To organize esports competition, you have to find a venue to accommodate over hundred audience. While usually most youth centers don't have this space or while even the integrated uh service centers can't accommodate this large amount of young people. The administration claimed that the esports have economic potential. And the government have allocated one million to cyber port to provide a venue as well as to support uh industry development. When referring to the industry, did you also cover cyber youth service? Was this um cyber youth social outreach service? Now that the NGOs are doing a lot of the youth work online, can the I T B consider to work closer with uh the cyber youth service units? Another question on cyber port. Well, it's a good spot, but also very remote. Is it possible to identify another site outside of Hong Kong Island for that also uh to uh identify sites to address the shortage of esports competition venues? First, our focus is industrialization. For anything that can help esports to turn into an industry will um and do so as for uh whether we cover the youth work or not, will uh to evaluate whether it fits our definition. If so, then we'll go ahead. And for the esports venue, it's more than the location and the venue. It need to have a lot of equipment to make it go global. Just because it's convenient can make it happen, but I know that Mong Kok have a a world-class esports venue. Want their location much better. However, this is a private venture. As for the remotest of cyber port, we don't ch- I have no plan to turn cyber port into Mong Kok. But I point out that a lot of the uh foreign uh startup are located in rather remote places. Well, somehow they're able to uh pull talent. Besides this, we need to train up the talent. For an esports, we need different type of talents besides these esports players. I wonder have I asked you question? No. Oh. Well, the secretary claimed that if I am t- if a esports can be industrialized, which is the core theme. I'm asking if that would only cover youth services and the NGO and he claims that whether it um fits the definition of industrialization. If yes, then then do we know, but can can you tell me, is it a yes or no? How do we have a common ground to help them? It's not that if they don't fit the definition, they won't offer assistance. Because a lot of cooperation uh we need to to brainstorm for a common ground and a common uh goal for cooperation. Thank you, secretary. So at least you can know where we can cooperate. Next, Mister Chow's mark second round. I'll give you four minutes still. I hope the secretary can help them, Mister Chow's mark. Esports besides industrialization, it holds in competitions, education is also relevant. As for those working in the social service sector, or you you ask them to uh start a social enterprise, then all thing get corporatized. As long as it help the young people, I'm sure the secretary will work on it. I T B O four nine. On the uh new development areas, land allocation, some members have asked about land use. So we shouldn't just wait for the uh River Loop. And for Kooten North, N D A, you claim seventeen point five hectares, Hong Shui Kiu, N D A, nine hectares. And Wang Chao fif- uh fifteen. And Lintong, Hengyuan Yip, B C P, fifty-six hectares. A lot of the uh facilities, especially data center or even for uh reindustrialization, besides the uh resumed sites at the industrial estates. Uh those in the sector have told me frequently they want to have a clear direction when and where the land can be granted. Was it recently like um the plots for the data center could be put up for auction? Or can we be granted through other means or would we would included in the science park and which the S science park cooperation were allocated it in a manner similar to industrial state? They want clarity. So maybe um when we talk in land planning on next session, we can inquire about the development view. And they claim that uh they need to discuss with the I T B. We've been asking it for years. So how do we uh get a a clear answer much quicker, especially those who would want to make a large-scale investment in Hong Kong? For all the cloud computing, actually, they do need land. A lot of the cloud corporations or those from the mainland, they wish to expand their presence in Hong Kong. Can you provide them with clarity so that they can invest in Hong Kong?
Secretary, I would like to thank the member for his question. Well, you talk about land. Indeed, uh as you know, it is a very major issue, but the land uses have been decided, right? You talk about the timing. Well, it depends on when the land is available and when the infrastructural facilities are available. For the River Loop, we For the River Loop, we have to form the land with the decontaminated and we have to make sure that the public utilities are ready. Uh we hope that uh the first site will be available in twenty twenty-one. It is not that we want to drag our feet, but we want to make sure that it is being carried out properly. Now for the Science Park, for aspect one, I think it is approaching completion. And the resources will be used to set up the platform. And then for the industrial estates, whenever land is available, whenever uh premises are available, the commissioner will confirm uh what I'm going to say, that is, we will make sure that it will be put to good use. And then for Cyberport, five billion dollars for Cyberport five, so that's for sure. And then for existing industrial buildings, again, they can also be turned into innovation and technology use. And again, we are going to give concessions in relation to the payment of land premium. Yes, I have expected the secretary to give such an answer. But please focus on the land available in the new development areas. You don't actually need to tell us the specific locations of available sites. They just want to know uh in year twenty twenty-one, this number of hectares of land available. And the same for twenty twenty-two. They don't need you to give them the address, the specific address, they just want to have an idea so that they can plan the investment. Yes, uh we'll certainly um expedite our work along the line that you have mentioned. Doctor Elizabeth Quat, second round, four minutes. Smart City. The administration has already issued this Smart City blueprint. And then it was said that uh it is going to be an evolving document. So I want to know whether we are going to get the blueprint two point zero and when are we going to get it? And then for EID, I think the tender exercise has been completed and you are commencing the work. As I have said, other than the infrastructure, we need the EBR as well. Um what is your timetable, have you planned to do it? And then yesterday, during another session, I did ask Mister Edward Yao, that is um Smart City can become one of our exports. Now for Smart City developments, according to surveys, I think Smart City itself um can become a huge market, uh like measuring two trillion US dollars. Singapore, South Korea, among others, see their governments working very hard to boost the G two G um services and products. Take the case of South Korea. They succeeded in getting a contract in India so that they are going to drop a Smart City blueprint for over a hundred cities in India. There are also other examples. So what I'm trying to say is that it is a matter of the governments taking the initiative to promote the Smart City concept. And then they're going to provide a basket of services. So the ETO, TDC, uh among other government departments have to join hands to help promote our Smart City services. So that our service promoters uh will have a market developed overseas. I think we can set our eyes on the Asian market, Greater Bay Area market, as well as the Belgium Road uh market. If we don't um develop our potential, others will catch up and overtake us. So I hope the administration can comment on my idea. Secretary, thank you, Doctor Elizabeth Quat. Yes, you talked about the blueprint two point zero. Yes, in due course, we will do that. Currently, uh we have got one point zero, version one point zero. We've got seventy-six items that have to be implemented. And um we are working on them actively. And on a quarterly basis, uh we will have a look of the progress within the context of the steering committee under the chairmanship of the CEO. As to whether we can develop a in uh a a business uh in relation to Smart City development. Well, the government doesn't get involved in doing business. No, no, it's a matter of promoting um the export of our services. Yes, indeed, we'll do this. Uh we've got a platform. We need to establish our strength before we can promote the brand name. I think uh EID will uh sort of give us huge opportunities. And there will be a lot of scenarios in which we can use it. What about EBR? Mister Lam, the of uh Ocho. I think um he's, she's talking about the EBR, electronic business registration. We are going to start an initial um sort of understanding. We will work together with the relevant offices with IRD. We are going to approach the ITBP and report on progress. And then we'll try to see how we can take this forward, that is the EBR. Miss uh Doctor Quat, you say the EBR will see the um study completed within the year and then you will embark on it? I think the EID and the EBR are similar. The EID is um citizen-based, for EBR, um it is enterprise-based. So the basis is similar, but we need to have an overall plan. So I'm interested in the timetable. Mister Lam, uh just briefly, we'll carry out our study this year. And then early next year, we'll complete the study and then we will report to the ITBP of the Electrical. So we don't yet have a timetable for implementation. Depending on the findings of the survey, if a case can be established, then we'll do it. I hope it will be done as soon as possible. The last to ask questions in this session, Mister Charles Mark, three minutes. Yes, just a quick question. One twenty-one, that's about the technology voucher program. You have raised the funding ceiling and you have also liberalized the criteria. Are you going to do it right now? And then what about streamlining the application procedures? Can you elaborate on the um arrangements? Uh perhaps the commissioner can also elaborate on the answer. Yes, Commissioner Choi. Chair, all the enhancement measures have been introduced immediately. So we've already streamlined the application process for certification of the documents that has been dispensed with. And then we used to ask for quotation documents to be presented to us. Again, this is, this has been scrapped. So in other words, three quotations, five quotations, you don't need them. They need to, they still have to invite quotations. Um we used to ask for that to be done, now it has been dispensed with. And under the refined um uh process or the refined mechanism, we have already vetted two thousand applications. So we are uh going down the road for further simplification, further streamlining, so that more SMEs can know about this channel. So more publicity please, so that they will make greater use of them and then we can exhaust the money available. I've been got other questions. I'm really concerned about this program because it can really help the SMEs and it can assist the industry. So please note Mister Mark's uh recommendation. Thank you for your attendance, that's it for this session, we are going to start another session at four PM.